Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 2nd, 2024 City of Nashua Planning Board Meeting. Madam Secretary, could we please get a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Dauntis, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
Alder Minkley.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the March 21st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes and is willing to make a recommendation as to their acceptance? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the March 21st, 2024 minutes as written.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Green. Put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? Mr. Hudson abstains. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Communications. Linda, anything to add tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The only thing that came in after the packets were posted originally was we received an email from Inabutter regarding 24A Broad Street, the Doggy Day Care, and that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. Next item on the agenda is report of Chair, Committee, and Liaison. Ms. Harper, anything to report on this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Recently had a Historical Commission meeting. We had two cases. One was for the Hidden Peak requesting signage for their restaurant. A new version of their request was approved. The second case is pending for the Universal Church. They wanted to add a breezeway between their multiple buildings, but we've asked for them to come back with a different plan of action.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Harper. Next, we're going to begin our executive session. Before doing so, I would like to read the Planning Board procedure. The procedure of the meeting and hearing are as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional or special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the Chair. The Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff. The Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and the Chair shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding this plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this has completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will begin the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote upon the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances of Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. Thank you for your interest and your courteous attention, and I would please request that you turn off cell phones or set them to vibrate at this time. First, on the agenda, Old Business Conditional Use Permits. First case, 824-006, has been postponed till the May 16th hearing, so we will not be hearing the case for the property at 593 Amherst Street. Second, under Old Business Conditional Use Permits is case 824-0021, Microsociety Academy Charter School, property located at 591 West Hollis Street. Has any member of the Board had an opportunity to review this application, is willing to make a motion to have the case be heard this evening?
Mr. Chair, did we want to hear both of their requests at the same time?
I'm sorry.
824-0020?
You are correct, Ms. Harper. Thank you. My apologies. Yes, there is a second item for the same property, Old Business Site Plan, case 824-0020. So what I would need from the Board is a motion to accept both cases individually, if we could. Because we would start with the Conditional Use Permit first. Oh, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. As to Old Business Case 824-0021, the Conditional Use Permit, I would make a motion that application is complete and ready for us to accept jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Varley. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Harper? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Next, I would ask for a motion regarding 824-0020 under Old Business Site Plans for the same property. Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction of case 824-0020.
A motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Mr. Zajak, you're here on behalf of the applicant tonight. Very good.
I am.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua, here tonight representing the applicant, Microsociety Academy Charter School. With me here are two school representatives, Barbara Halevi, who's the Chair of their Board, as well as Amy Bottomley, their Executive Director. Also with us here tonight is Attorney Morgan Hollis, the Project Attorney. We have pretty straightforward requests before the Board tonight, seeking a one-year extension for both the CUP and site plan approvals that were granted about a year ago. The application was to change the use of the existing 589 West Hollis Street building from an office use to a school use. We also had a number of associated site improvements that we were performing as part of the project. Those included significant changes onsite to improve both circulation and pedestrian safety and movement throughout the site. We also agreed to relocate the existing driveway, which helps clean up kind of an offset intersection that's out there now along West Hollis Street between the site driveway and Gendron Street, which is a residential street on the opposite side of West Hollis Street. In addition to that, we committed to restriping within West Hollis Street along our frontage to, again, kind of clean up the existing condition there where you had some conflicts in movements. That was done in close concert with both the Engineering Department, specifically between our traffic consultant, Van S., and the city's traffic engineer, Mr. Husband. And one of those will be adding a eastbound left-turn pocket, as you can see up on the plan, which will really help improve safety at that location. We don't have any planned changes that are part of this request. The request is simply to ask for more time. So obviously, being a school project, there's kind of a limited window in which the school can perform site work, typically during the summer. The school has been moving forward on the project since its approval. They've since closed on the property last year. They've also been working diligently to resolve some existing lease and tenant matters, and I'm told that's moving forward in a positive way, such that the school is really ready to sign contracts for construction to start here in June on this project with your approval here tonight. We were obviously prepared to appear before the Board about a month ago, but the Board canceled that meeting, so here we are tonight. So time is somewhat of the essence as us as we look to start the project this summer. Lastly, you'll see, in addition to the two extension requests, one being the CUP extension, one being the site plan, we did work with staff to include kind of a third component to the approval, which is Board recognition that substantial completion for the project and vesting will be upon substantial completion of the site work. And that was important for the school to move forward, especially because there are still some uncertainties related to existing tenants within the 589 building, but with that certainty that if they do the site improvements as contemplated, they will be vested for that change of use moving forward, and that will give them that confidence to move forward with that work this summer. So that's really what that third piece is related to. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zajak. I think before I turn it over to the Board for questions, I would like to call on Mr. Hudson, just to make sure Engineering has a level of satisfaction or if he had any additional commentary to add to what's proposed this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Dan Hudson, City Engineer, for the record. Mr. Zajak and I spoke earlier today. We have been trying to find additional improvements to potentially improve safety out there. Currently, as everybody's aware, taking a left turn out of any site along West Hollis Street is challenging during certain periods of time, certainly when the school peak departure period, that's a current issue. I reached out to the fire department because there's that connection of the Stadium Drive parcel to the back that is a finger of that parcel that comes out and abuts West Hollis Street. That's an emergency access to Stello Stadium. It's currently gated at both ends. It's not paved. I reached out to the fire department just seeking their feedback on an idea that should... Would they be accommodating to potentially a driveway connection to that accessway? I sent a sketch to them, you know, what if a portion of that accessway was paved, so that could be an alternate means of egress. So you didn't have to turn left out of the site. You could go out through Stello Stadium, come out of Signal at Riverside. Fire Department was accepting of that. So today, and Mr. Zajak was where I was, I'd reached out to Fire Department, I was seeking this as an idea to improve safety. But so with the Fire Department's concurrence, I don't want to mask it forward today. I think it'd be unreasonable to ask the applicant to do that, all that work I was suggesting. But should at some point the city be willing to improve that mercy accessway, I just want some level of commitment or understanding that the school be willing to contemplate a driveway connection to provide that ultimate egress method. It would be beneficial with the site. Realigning the driveway was done for a couple of reasons. One was, it was contemplated that perhaps we could combine this with a traffic student at Wellesley Road, have those two intersections running together. That idea is still out there. It's not in our immediate plans. I think, as I expressed last year, the city's engaged in a corridor study, looking at all of West Hollis Street corridor. That's certainly an area of focus due to the merge that occurs there and the signal and whatnot. So that's something we're still looking at, but we don't have a signal in the this year, next year, even the year after plan currently, not funded or anything like that. If there was a signal there, I'd be less concerned with that issue of departing traffic, you know, the potential for an alternate egress. I think we'll provide an alternate means of egress, which I think would improve safety. That's about as far as I've gotten with it. So I don't... It may not be appropriate to add an official condition. The school's been very accommodating. Throughout this whole process, they did a bunch of traffic study for us. They agreed to revise the site as previously approved on the plan, so we're very appreciative of that and of everything they've done. But I would be seeking to some sort of, like I said, some sort of concurrence or agreement or whatever that should, should we have the opportunity arise that we could make an even safer condition, that that would be... They'd work with us on that in some capacity. So that's all I have additional. That's all that's come up in the last year, basically, since this was originally approved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that background information, Mr. Hudson. Before we get to additional questions, perhaps, Mr. Zajak, do you have any response to that or anything to add to Mr. Hudson's statement?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. I appreciate the comment. Mr. Hudson and I spoke today. If you know me, if you know our firm, we don't like having these discussions live in person in front of the Board. We like to solve these in advance. Sometimes, that's not always possible. You know, I think, based on, you know, my discussions with the school, you know, we have and will continue to work with the city. They're good partners. I'm sure maybe someday down the road, they'll be before this Board again. Hopefully, that means they're growing. We realize it's a challenging corridor. They inherited that. They're doing the best they can, and we worked with Mr. Hudson, Mr. Husband, on the previous plan to try to make the best of it, and we do think we're making substantial improvements. I think our, in speaking behalf of the school, concerns about kind of limited budget and time and kind of how those things come together, given their window to make those site improvements this year, this summer. I think there's also some concerns that needs to be studied further about impacts to circulation. So certainly, if that road was paved, it's a very short stretch for them to pave a connection to it. But the way we've set up the current plan right now, there's different routes that you take if you've got kids at the lower school, or kids just at the middle school, or kids at both schools. And I think part of the concern is, if everybody's leaving out that location, it brings all the traffic in front of that middle school in a location where maybe they were doing more queuing for kids at pickup time. So I'm not saying it's not possible. It's just kind of further study that's needed, and there'll certainly be some impacts to the site. Another concern that, you know, Mr. Hudson and I spoke to today was, you know, the potential for then through traffic from Stello Stadium, once folks realize that that connection is there on a Friday or Saturday night, folks are trying to get back through our site. So is it gated? You know, is our traffic only left out during peak pickup and drop-off times? Is it all time? Does the school have to have somebody down at the end to be opening and closing the gate? There's kind of a lot of details, obviously, to work through. I think we, speaking on behalf of the school, would, you know, certainly seek to continue moving forward tonight, certainly seek your approval. I'm not sure we could commit to making a connection, but certainly we can commit to, you know, continuing to explore that feasibility moving forward. So if that's something that the Board is comfortable with, we'd be comfortable with some kind of language to that effect.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Hudson. Obviously, he's right here. He seemed to be intimating if there's the potential for future discussions. Obviously, what's before the Board tonight is the one-year extension for both applications. That said, Mr. Hudson seemed comfortable moving forward without any further condition or stipulation upon that, but it seems like both parties are amenable to continuing to have future discussions. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the discussion. I mean, to be honest, Mr. Husband and I spent a lot of time talking about the intersection and how traffic flows at the entrance to the site. We hadn't tried or spent a lot of time trying to understand how the internal site circulation was working. So I can understand there could be issues there that could present challenges. I do recognize that, and that's something we would need to talk further through. Again, I don't know. I've been through a lot of these extensions. They never added any conditions, to my knowledge. I don't know if that's... But why are we here was kind of my point. Like, if these things came back and there was never any changes, why do we even bother going forward, you know? So anyway, with that new piece of information, if there's a possibility of connection, that's all I'm looking for, is continued willingness to talk with us and see if there's things that can be done in the future. I don't... I understand that we haven't worked out all the details, so we can't fully understand what those are, and they can't commit to that. I do understand that. But yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward in any regard. You know, we're on the record as saying that we've worked together, and I just want to continue because I think there could be an opportunity here to provide some safety. I did envision a gate. I envisioned a gate that the school would control and be able to open during their peak departure period, close during other periods. I did envision also potentially... There's no issue taking a right turn out of the school, I imagine, so I wasn't trying to say that those folks had to go out the back and through all the rest of the site. But certainly, for the left turners, those that wanted to do that in a safer fashion, I would have that opportunity if a connection was made, so.
Mr. Chair, just one more point. As we did, if you read that substantial completion suggested condition, it does note except for improvements around the building. That's a nod to the unknown kind of tenant issues there, as well as in that northeast corner of the site, and that's a nod to, you know, potentially having an access point in that location.
Understood. Thank you for the testimony. I would like to open it up to the Board now. Any member of the Board has a question on the applications before us?
No, just the only question that I have maybe is just, I guess, if there was a connection made and the circulation was changed. I mean, it would be a pretty significant site plan change. It would probably need to come back to us, anyway.
You'd have to ask Sam and Linda.
Yeah, so I'm not that worried. I guess I'm not that worried about... I mean, it seems like you're changing the in and the out and, you know.
From just a pavement perspective, I would say no. That'd be something that we'd be able to handle administratively. However, if there are significant changes to site circulation or volumes associated with this development at specific intersections, this one or Riverside, we would want to take a look at that and then make a call at that time when we have that information, whether or not it constitutes coming back to the Board.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Questions from other members of the Board? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zajak. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to this project? Certainly. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
We're Kelly and Randy Biggs. We live at the 586 West Hollis Street parcel. It's directly across from the current school. It's listed as the Susie property up there, but we bought it about two years ago. Our major concern is just simply doubling the school's size. It's going to double the amount of traffic in that area. I understand things have to grow, but I did attend a big road study meeting. I think Mr. Hudson was there, and there was never any mention of a change of this substance at that Gendron Street intersection. And if you notice on there, where now the school wants to put a left-turn lane coming from Hollis... I'm losing track of my directions, but into the school, if you look where that is, my existing driveway that's been there for 75 years is like right smack in the middle of where that change would be. I already take my life in my hands when I turn into my driveway on that road because, you know, people coming up behind you, and they don't want to slow down, and they don't want to stop. And now, all of a sudden, I'm going to have to cross two lanes of traffic to try to, I think, or a lane and a half. I can't even quite figure that part out. So, I mean, I understand about the school growing, and that's life, but there's so much traffic in that one area between Riverside and the Wellesley-Ledgewood intersection, so many fire trucks blasting down there, that creating a left-turn lane to go into the school just from that side of Nashua, just, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me. So I guess I'm just expressing concerns over the traffic pattern that's being suggested. And again, I just wonder why, at that meeting, this area was discussed so much, and there was never any mention of this big a change in that area. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Did you have anything else to add, sir?
No, she pretty much summed it up. I'm just concerned about that whole section. I mean, it really... Changing that into a left-turn lane affects two homes, ours and our neighbors, and it just, I don't know. It's already a mess.
Yeah, I just...
It's already a mess.
I just worry about that. That's all my concern, is the traffic pattern in that area. It's already crazy for people. They can't figure out, you know, when you're heading towards Hollis, that lane drop. That's already a mess. Now, we're going to do the lane drop, but I don't know.
Thank you. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to that, so thank you. Oh, Mr. Hudson, please.
Oh, oh. Add anything if needed after the applicant speaks to it.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, I'll open it up. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak in favor or in support of the project? Seeing none, I would ask Mr. Zajak to come back and address any comments that he can, please.
Sure. So as the Board knows, traffic issues are about balance, and there were a lot of conflicting kind of issues or concerns with this intersection. One of the biggest concerns was the offset in terms of Gendron Street and the site driveway, and where cars, you know, traveling eastbound were taking that left-hand turn. But one of the other major problems is, as it's striped today, as you're traveling westbound towards the Wellesley Road intersection to the left, plan left, is there's a continuous left-turn pocket, both for those who are turning left into Gendron Street and those who are continuing down into Ledgewood. And so what was happening is folks were getting in that left-hand turn lane very early and bombing through the intersection. And so, again, our traffic consultant, Van S., worked with the city on this in terms of the striping and kind of overall approach. Felt it was appropriate to add that left-hand turn pocket for cars traveling eastbound into the site. That would kind of help, along with the driveway realignment, for a number of those competing issues. So my testimony here tonight is, you know, we're here for an extension. I can say that we, you know, studied this extensively, and, you know, I think this is kind of the best balanced approach for, you know, for that intersection, for the overall improvement of safety of that intersection as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, anything to add to that?
Yeah, only that I apologize for not making this a specific point of interest at that corridor study meeting. I guess in my mind, we had this had gone to Planning Board and had been approved about a year prior, so it wasn't top of mind, but I do understand. I mean, the point of that meeting was to gather public input, everybody's concerns on the corridor. We did hear concerns about that merge. People moved through the intersection, as Mr. Zajak mentioned. This does eliminate that. Tries to correct the issue of the overlapping left turns. Like, you don't want somebody destined beyond to turn to the left, a person coming the other way, and they have an opportunity for head-on conflict there because they're both trying to get somewhere and may not recognize the other person's trying to cross their path, so to speak. So I do recognize it's hard to turn out driveways on the corners, no doubt about that, and that location in particular is challenging. We're not widening the road at all. We're just shifting the driveway and shifting the lane down a little bit, so I guess that's what I have to additional offer.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any further questions of the applicant from the Board? No? Okay. Seeing none, going to close the public hearing at this time. Seeing none, going to close the public hearing at this time. Any discussion or further issues or concerns from, from the board? Mr. Barley?
I guess this is more, more a note than anything else, but to Mr. Hudson's point, you're right, at least in my experience, we haven't typically added additional conditions when we've, when we've done these sorts of extensions, but I don't think there's anything that prohibits us from doing that. Certainly, I think we could add conditions, but I think I heard you correctly that, you know, to the extent that we're, we're just talking about sort of having further discussions in terms of that, you know, the driveway extension and the accident at the back of the site, I don't think we necessarily need to add a condition. But is that, is that a fair assessment? You, you wouldn't ask, you know, for us to add a, a more stringent condition that would, would ask the applicant to do something more, more affirmative or specific, I guess, at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's fair to say, particularly since this is, you know, last minute to this extension approval and they need to get out of construction and all that, I do understand that. And to date, the history's been good, and they're willing to work, they're very willing to work with us. I don't have any expectation that that be any different, and I'm not trying to throw monkey wrench into, into this necessarily, I just, if there's an opportunity of new safety, I'd like to see us collectively try and do that, and, but yeah, I'm comfortable with not adding a condition tonight, given the testimony that, you know, people are generally willing to continue to work with us. I think that's good enough for me tonight.
Mr. Chair, certainly. Mr. Barley, yes, please.
Just want to comment to the, you know, the, the issue that was raised by the others, I appreciate the, the concern and, and also that, that you may not have an opportunity to address it at this prior meeting. Again, as Mr. Hudson indicated, you know, the planning board did have the opportunity to review this plan, you know, about a year ago and, and approve it, and, and so that the, you know, the consideration tonight is extended. But I think the consensus was, you know, when we approved the plan originally, that this was, you know, this was going to actually, you know, improve the traffic situation, you know, moving in and out of the site and help reduce some of those, you know, potential conflicts that may exist currently. So I just wanted to provide that explanation, that, you know, this was something that the planning board, you know, reviewed in a fair bit of detail when the plan was originally approved.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Any other matters of discussion from members of the board? Mr. Leclerc, yes?
I just want to talk about this substantial completion wording, because I, the way it's in the staff report, it's kind of like an additional motion, but I, I think it's probably a stipulation? Or would you just?
It's crafted as a motion because we're, we're taking a proactive approach to defining what substantial completion is based on the proposed work on site. So this would be to formalize the recognition of this defined work as substantial completion.
Does it relate to the site plan, though? Or initial use permit? Or both?
Both, because it would be, if this work was completed as defined under this definition of substantial completion, both the CUP and the site plan approvals would be vested.
Maybe a quick follow-up. I guess where, where I'm going with this, is this one singular motion for both applications?
This is three separate motions. It'd be two extensions, one for the CUP, one for the site plan, and then a third defining substantial completion.
Okay.
And so it would not be, you are not recommending that we make, you know, say, a motion to approve conditional use permit that would then include this definition of substantial completion and then including that in the motion for, you know, a motion for approval of the extension of the site plan as well?
You could do it that way. I just figured this would be a cleaner approach, but you're welcome to, as long as that is captured, I believe the applicant and us would be happy with that.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Right. Yes, Mr. Hudson, please?
I mean, the purpose of defining this is, is this is the tie prior to occupancy, right? This level of development needs to be changed?
Yes.
And when we say not, the improvements, exclusive of the proposed improvements directly adjacent to 589 West Hollis Street building, what portion of the site is that, what, what part of the work are we talking about there?
So that's around the, the, the second building, the, the one that is contemplated as an expansion, understanding that there were some conversations with the tenants and there's been some delay in work. To be able to execute the driveway realignment and other work around the existing school building, that would constitute substantial completion to vest the approvals. And then they'd be able to work with the tenant as things move along and carry on their work on that part of the site without having to come back to the board for approvals when they've already executed work elsewhere on the site.
Further?
Certainly, Mr. Hudson.
Does that work with your required occupancy of that additional building, correct?
So, I guess we're, we're at the point, members of the board, we'd be looking for three separate recommendations. I guess we could take the first one first. Should they be taken, actually, a quick question for staff, should they be taken individually as opposed to rolled in? Yes, okay. All right, so we would be looking for a motion with respect to old business conditional use permits, case 824-0021. Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As to old business 824-0021, I would make a motion to approve the request for an extension for one year with the, the one condition that all prior conditions are incorporated.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Barley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclerc. Any further discussion? Put it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Next, we would be looking for a motion with respect to old business site plan regarding the one-year extension for case 824-0020. Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, as to old business 824-0020, the, the site plan for Microsociety Academy Charter School, I would make the motion to approve the requested one-year extension, and again, with the single condition that all prior conditions are incorporated.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Barley. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Lastly, we would be looking for a motion regarding threshold for substantial completion related to both cases 824-0020 and 824-0021. Mr. Barley?
Chair, yes, so as you indicated, as to both the approved extensions for 824-0021 conditional use permit and 824-0020, site plan that make the motion to define substantial completion or active and substantial development for purposes of both of those applications in accordance with RSI 674392 and NRO 190-149B, at, you know, in order to vest the approval of both of those conditional use permit and site plan applications, defining that substantial completion as the completion of all site work depicted on the plan, signed and dated April 6, 2023, inclusive of the relocation of the driveway and all site improvements, but exclusive of the proposed improvements directly adjacent to 589 West Hollis Street and in the northeast portion of the site.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Motion by Mr. Barley? Is there a second? Second, Mr. Green? Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. And that, that completes your evening, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along in the agenda, old business subdivision plans, prior cases, three regarding the, basically the Mohawk-Tannery properties, case 823-0066 through 823-0068 had already been, continued to a date certain of June 20th, so we will not be hearing those tonight. Also related to that is case 823-0069 under old business site plan. That case is also continued to a date certain of June 20th, 2024. Next item, case 824-005 under old business site plan, JFC Real Estate. That case has been postponed to the May 16, 2024 meeting, and that leads us to our next item on the agenda, which is new business conditional use permits. PKM Realty, Barkingham Place applicant, property located at 24A Broad Street. Has any member of the board had a chance to review this application and is willing to make a motion as to whether or not the board should accept jurisdiction this evening?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Harper?
I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction of 824-0041.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Harper, take jurisdiction. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? All right, we have jurisdiction. Is anyone here this evening to present on behalf, on behalf of the applicant? It's okay, just introduce yourself, state your, your name and address for the record, and we're, we're happy to hear your presentation, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cliff Holzel of 3 Bow Site Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Michelle Markopolous, 3 Bow Site Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm going to try not to pass out because I don't like to public speaking. So I apologize if I'm super nervous.
No problem, the, the one, the one minor request I would ask, the audio sometimes is finicky, if you need to adjust it just to make sure it's properly oriented, that's perfect, so.
I don't want to blow your ears out either.
It's okay, the, the floor is yours, go right ahead, okay?
I don't even know where to start, to be honest, I don't know.
A, a brief overview of, of your proposed business, maybe talk about hours of operation, where, where parking might be accommodated, kind of, kind of general, I guess, site operational characteristics would be appropriate, and if, if there's anything unclear to the board, we're, we're, we'll ask you some follow-up questions, but, you know, take, take, take your time and, you know, tell us what you think is important tonight, okay?
Yeah, I did make a little copy for everybody, I don't know if you want to look through stuff or just follow along if you need it.
If, if you had handouts, that's, that's great, but, you know, if you just wanted to converse as well, that's, that's okay, so.
All right, so, let's see, so, the hours of operation for the, because we do daycare and boarding, would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and there will be scheduled drop-off and pickup times. And I kind of did a little, on this here, like staggered, like Dog A maybe dropped off at 8:00 AM, picked up at 2:30 PM, Dog B might be dropped off at 9:00, picked up at 3:00, so it's just all staggered and scheduled, so it wouldn't be 20 people just piling in to drop off.
Showing up at 8 o'clock, right?
Right, so it is all staggered, different times throughout the week. No daycare would be provided on the weekends, because of the boarding, obviously if we're boarding, then there would be dogs there on the weekends, but there wouldn't be any additional daycare dogs. Same thing with boarding, you know, we'd have a scheduled drop-off time between like 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM before we close. The pickup times for dogs that are boarding would, would vary because if people are traveling, flights are canceled, there's traffic issues, so it's harder to say, they, they may say, I'll be there on Sunday at noon, but the flight gets canceled, so they can't come till Monday at whatever time that might be to pick up the dog.
But it would still be within normal business hours, Monday through Friday on those days?
Right, you would be showing up at midnight.
Weekends, it would be, you know, no later than 7 o'clock, and other than that, they would have to wait till the next day in order to pick up.
The dogs that are boarding, Cliff and myself would be on-site, so the dogs wouldn't be unattended, so there would be someone there for 20, you know, 24 hours essentially with the dogs that are boarding. What else do we have here?
I think one of the concerns somebody may have, for example, is boarding, last let-outs of the evening would be about anywhere between 9:00 and 9:30 in the evening for a let-out, which can last anywhere from five to 10 minutes tops.
And it wouldn't be, you know, 10 dogs?
It's not play, it's not playtime at, at 9 o'clock at night.
Right, and we would do small, like three or four dogs at a time, we wouldn't pile 10 dogs out, just probably barking at 9 o'clock at night. If the boarding, like if we had like one or two dogs for boarding, we'd probably just take them home with us at, when we close at 7:00 PM, just take them and then show up the next day with the boarding dogs. I know noise, noise control obviously is, is a, is a big issue, but there, I just kind of outlined, like there's a lot of reasons why dogs bark, and it's good to understand why they bark and how to help, you know, keep that to a minimum, minimum, minimal amount of barking. Anxiety, boredom, aggression, looking for attention, just for some examples. There is a doggy daycare in Hollis Village Century Pet Care, they've been in business for 47 years, they're in a historical district, and they have a no bark policy, which sounds a little silly because dogs bark, but basically what they're saying is, they don't allow excessive barking inside or outside of the building. It's not, it's not helpful, it's not healthy for the, the dogs to have continual crazy barking or for...
Or for us.
We don't, we don't want to be in the building while 20 dogs are barking, so basically we would evaluate dogs coming in, like a temperament test, see how they do.
During their meeting greet?
During the, like the meeting greet. Dogs are aggressive, fearful, anxiety, like they would probably weed it out because those are the dogs that would have more tendency to be barking a lot, so it just would be unacceptable if someone did become excessively barking, they would be, you know, dismissed from, from the daycare essentially, and some of the reason, some of the ways that we're going to help minimize that, we're going to do, we're actually in a, a training doggy, dog training certificate program, but we would, we're going to be doing pack, pack walks, hikes, agility, small staggered playtimes, enrichment activities, it'd be scheduled nap times, the dogs would be in small groups outside, but 100% supervised, I would be inside, Cliff would be outside. We would have common music, you know, playing throughout, along with even white noise machines. There is carpeting in the, in the building now, so we would be ripping that up, obviously for obvious reasons, and we would be installing rubber flooring, which is obviously sound, absorb sound. The next issue where, where people's concerned would be like, you know, smell and odor control. So feces would be picked up immediately, both inside and outside. We, again, we don't want the dogs running through poop and jumping on us or getting poop all over the place, so it would be picked up immediately. I don't know if anybody's... I don't know if anybody's familiar with a diaper genie, anyone who has had kids, so the poop would be picked up, put in the diaper genie, which keeps odors and flies and all that away, and then we would just dispose of it, like, in the regular trash. So because the back of the building is all pavement, so obviously dogs can't be on hot pavement or whatnot, so we're going to have artificial turf installed with a drainage, there are tiles that they put it on, so that when you clean it, it can drain and dry properly. And I've been in touch with Chewy's Playland, they use what's called a wishy-washy, a wishy-wash to clean their artificial grass, so I've been in contact with the owner of that company, it's a sanitizing system. And basically, if you want to look at this, he just explains that the chemical that's used is chlorine. There's no detergents or stabilizers that would be harmful, there's no lye, which is in bleach, chlorine is unstable, breaks down rapidly with organic materials such as grass, multer soil. It's well-established that chlorine's been used to treat drinking water for over a hundred years, and it's less of a parts per million for what we're going to be using to clean the artificial grass.
Oh, that's from wishy-washy.
Oh, I just had it, I just kind of copied and pasted his email, and I also got permission from the civil engineers, James Petropolis, to use his site, we asked if we could use his site plan to kind of show the, where the fence would be.
Yeah, that was included as part of our packet, so we do have that, so...
Yeah, so he said yes, I have that here, and I know, like I said, I'm really nervous, I'm missing stuff.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, please. I'm Elizabeth Hardigan, I represent the applicants as well. I, they had submitted a plan about with the fence covering the entire backyard, they have now, on further thought of parking and allowing their customers to come through, I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but currently, right now, there's a driveway around the building, that's like a horseshoe around the building, and they want to sort of extend the horseshoe back even further, so that it would go around their fenced-in backyard area, so that, one, people can drop off, but also so that they can utilize the existing handicap ramp off the side of the building, should any of their customers need access to that. So they anticipate most of their customers will probably just park out front and pop in the front door, but they would have that ability to go around the back of the property, and then in addition, they'll have their employee parking behind the fence, so we can circulate that.
I made a bunch, I actually made...
Yeah, we can circulate a copy of that, so the plan may change just a little bit based on that need for where the fence is and continuing use of the horseshoe.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Appreciate the information, did you have anything else to add this evening?
No, I need a glass of wine, though. So nervous.
Understood. I think if you don't mind, just wait just one second, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions of the applicant at this time? Ms. Harper?
I have a few questions, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to grill you, but I do have a few concerns. I know that you're going through a certification program right now, but have either of you had a doggy daycare before, or have worked with animals?
Yeah, I mean, grew up with animals, had horses, goats, dogs, hamsters, birds, you name it, drove my parents crazy with all the animals that I've had. I also have a dog, it's actually a mutual friend of ours, she's a dog trainer, and she's been mentoring us along the way, and she's been great, so she's willing to, even if we needed her, she'd be there, but she's right on speed dial, so...
And I have another question, Mr. Chair. Are you going to have a certain number of dogs that are allowed to be on-site at one time, a maximum number?
Yeah, so...
So, we have a maximum, we thought of twenty-five dogs total, which is for boarding and daycare. So, for example, if we have daycare dogs, and, you know, there's ten of them, then we could have up to fifteen dogs total for boarding, but obviously boarding stays while daycare, and daycare we do have to, as well as full-day daycares.
And it's not always five days, like, it would be, some dogs would come two days a week, three days a week, so...
Correct, but, so, to help answer your question, it would never be more than twenty-five. You know, obviously, school vacation weeks are a little bit busier, so if we had more dogs that were boarding, we wouldn't be allowed to allow the additional dogs in regards to daycare piece, and that kind of helps keep everything in check in regards to that, so... We have a software program utilized for that called Time to Pet, so once it goes in, they're actually able to go in and schedule themselves, and once a block is filled, it's actually filled, and there's no way to establish an additional time at that point.
Understood, and just one more question.
Certainly, Ms. Harper, yes.
And how many staff members would be on-site at a time, the two you'd advantage those, the dogs?
Yes, I mean, eventually, if we met that twenty-five max, like, every single day, we would...
We would need, yeah, additional staff member, so... The hard part, obviously, is making sure that, you know, if dogs are going out in groups, you know, we want to do groups, more than about five dogs at a time, and then when the next dogs get ready to go, obviously, you have to go through and do group pickup and so forth before the next group of dogs go out, and then afterwards, from there, those dogs come in the next go out, so... The, as you see on the piece for the fencing, we felt there was extremely important for the dog's safety, to be able to have...
That's why it's attached to the house.
Attached to the house, so that there wasn't walking across the parking lot or something. You know, if you're walking five dogs, and one of them pulls, and now the collar comes off, then obviously there could be issues with dogs running away, so having that fencing attached to the building was extremely important, we thought, for safety.
Thank you.
Questions from other members of the board?
I just have one for staff, you know, I'm not trying to throw wrenches at things, but it looks like there's site work being proposed.
Well, the only...
With parking and a fence and the, a traffic pattern and stuff, and I wasn't sure, a conditional use permit can actually approve that. I mean, I don't know if you saw this until tonight, but...
No, I haven't seen what they have...
Yeah, you might just want to take a look at that, and I just don't want to give anybody the idea that a conditional use permit can address, you know, pick up, a drop-off, some parking spaces, any new pavement, and, you know, fencing, I think we might be stretching the conditional use permit concept a little bit.
So you're planning on putting in new pavement?
It's just a process thing, but, you know, we could...
So, they're not planning on putting in, I just confirmed, new pavement?
Okay.
It's what's existing there now. Typically, putting up a fence...
Yep.
On property, that wouldn't require a trip to the planning board, we typically would handle that administratively. Putting up just a fence, I think that was the only change proposed that I was aware of, is the fence, and I think that they were still trying to figure out exactly the best placement of the fence. The two driveways that are there, they're existing now, there's actually another business in there...
Right.
Presently, that's utilizing that space, but no additional pavement is being proposed for that, so it's just the fence?
Okay.
And that we could handle just as an administrative approval.
Yeah, I just don't want them to get stuck in this process, I mean, there was talk about like a handicap access, and those all sound like site plan things to me, so...
I think that's there currently, the ramp.
Is it there already?
It's already there, yeah.
Yeah, all right. That was my only question, I did, you know, wanted to make sure we weren't missing a part of the process here.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Questions from other members of the board? Mr. Hudson, please.
Yeah, I think like, Mr. Leclair, I'm a little confused, the handout, I see a dash area showing a fencing area, but that seems to encompass what, where the current parking is in the back of the site, so I don't see how that can be implemented without some additional pavement in the rear of the site. I think when engineering reviewed this, at any rate, you know, we had questions about was the onset parking sufficient or not, and now that seems to be a fenced-in area for the dogs for outdoors, so I have further concerns of that. The path, for the site plan, I think the paved area around the building is ten feet wide, and there was discussion about, we're going to park on the side of the road, and then people can park in the back, or something to that effect, so I have a little bit concerned about the site being congested and being able to get, while somebody's parked there, being able to get by and get to the back where you're going to park. There was discussion about bringing dogs to the front door, is that the door that faces Broad Street? Is that, that's the question I had? Okay, so, I mean, if they park in the back, and they're going to walk the dogs all the way to the front to go in that door, I guess that was the question I had, so, I don't know, I'm still, on the, the other question I guess I had is, on the plan, you showed like three dash lines in green, is that to indicate the parking in the back?
And if, when people drive and utilize the horseshoe-shaped driveway, it's going to be kind of like a drive-through, they're going to stop, drop, and go, so let's say two people, let's say two people showed up at the same time, the person in front of them have to wait five minutes, or two minutes, and then they would pull out, and the next car would come through behind them.
Yeah, it's just...
Yeah, Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, my, it's just my experience, we have seen several animal daycare slash kennel other things, and this might be the only one I have seen without a site plan. Just because some of these issues are really, they seem, I don't know, site plan-ish to me, and need some review internally from the city before I could get too far, I don't know, just a thought.
No, yeah, Mr. Hudson, please.
Yeah, I get the one-way pattern, that makes sense, if you're going to drive all around the site and park, so there's all that cooty space around the site to be, to, you know, fairly satisfied to be sufficient parking there, then, if that's understood, I just, there's, it sounds like the plan has developed a little bit, and I don't know that I have any concerns different than anything else expressed in Mr. Saunders' letter, I think we're probably in the same place, but environmental health didn't say much, although I know that pet waste is a concern, and they basically said we'll do with any complaints, but, fire had no comment, so I don't know if fire needs to get on, if they're concerned about needing a circulator, get on the site, in which case I think there could be a problem, because there's not, there's not enough space, where, like I said, somebody to park and somebody to circulate, but I do understand that use isn't that intensive, and that the drop-offs will be spread out over time, so maybe it won't be, you know, ten cars on-site at any one time, but, I don't know, I think it could benefit from a better site plan, but I do understand it's a, you know, small use and perhaps, you know, that's challenging to develop a better site plan, but probably won't, probably does want some of the site planned, perhaps, in my opinion, as well.
I guess, maybe just adding on to that, I think the real question before the board here tonight is not the size or the type of the use, I think it's whether or not this last-minute addition crosses over from a CUP to a site plan, and even if it doesn't, does that require still further engineering review, just to take a look at this, at a minimum, does fire get sort of a bite at the apple? I don't know the answers to that question. I think we're not trying to overcomplicate this, but it does differ from what was reviewed previously, so I guess, Dan, you sort of seemed to intimate that we could probably end up back at the same place, however, I don't want to skip over, if fire gets to look at this, police gets to look at this typically, and there has been some modification, I don't want to take them out of the process, but if it lent a little more insight into what staff level review typically occurs, that would be helpful, certainly, yep.
Yeah, I think from an engineering perspective, like I said, I think we, I don't know how the plan ties in, would I be comfortable with conditional approval with a condition that, you know, subsequent engineering, fire, health reviews need to basically change in the plan? But I don't know what that means, I don't know if we need to actually need a site plan or not, but I just, I want to make sure we have a definitive thing on record that we understand this is what it is, so if there's any issues, you know, get it implemented that way, and if there's any issues, we know when it can be amended later, so I don't, again, I don't know, what does staff feel relative to the need for a site plan, or does it feel that we don't need one, or, you may have a plan that's not called a site plan, that supports a conditional use permit, I don't know.
Mr. Barley, please.
Thank you, yeah, and I think, you know, I just want to distinguish between, it seems we're talking about two slightly different issues, one is, you know, whether this introduces changes potentially that are subject to site plan review versus whether we think the site could be designed better, you know, which would then, you know, translate into, you know, a site plan review requirement if they were redesigning the site. And so, I mean, understanding that maybe it's a little bit on the border, it does sound like, what we've heard from staff, at least as far as, you know, to the extent that really the only change to the site is the fencing, that that's, that wouldn't, that's, you know, historically has not been viewed as something that would be subject to site plan review. I mean, I understand that this drawing we've received tonight maybe introduces some, you know, additional concerns or considerations, it seems to me that they are not, that they're not technically site plan changes, they're really just an illustration of what the intended use of the site is, so I guess, you know, I would, you know, if the board is otherwise inclined to, you know, approve the application, I think I would suggest, as Mr. Hudson was alluding to, maybe we include some sort of condition that would allow for, you know, additional engineering and other staff review, but at least from what I've seen, what I understand about what's being proposed, it doesn't seem to me like it's a, as it stands, something that's within the realm of site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Thoughts or questions from other members of the board for the applicant? Mr. Hirsch?
What steps are you taking to keep the noise, assuming there is some barking going on there, from the neighbors? I mean, is there any physical change you're making to the building? Because it seems like you're very close to your butters, looking at the aerial.
Did I not blow it?
No.
I thought we touched base with some of it, but it was also in the nine piece.
First and foremost, obviously, is in regards to the meeting greet piece.
Oh, yeah, we talked, yeah, the no-bark policy we talked about?
Exactly, but he's looking to see, so for example, if the dog is, I mean, a dog is going to bark, it's if dogs do multiple barking, or excessive, or loud barking and so forth, obviously, they can't come back, they're not allowed back at that point. We have to have a policy in place for a no-bark policy in order to help make this happen, and then afterwards, obviously, there would be other things. As she had said, we are in a training program right now, the training program is in regards to dog mannerisms and also a piece of dog training and so... and so forth. So that allows us to be able to see some of these pieces as dogs come in to make sure that, but they won't be a problem or a nuisance to any of our neighbors. Again, just like everyone else, we working there don't want to hear the barking, so we do want to keep it to an air limit. We started looking into, to e-collar training with them as well to see if that's a benefit. We're still weighing out some of the pros and cons in regards to that to make sure that it's worthwhile to, to continue to pursue that angle. You don't want to just throw a bark collar on a dog if, if it's something, it could make it more anxious and, and hurt the dog more, so.
The other thing is going to be, the day's going to be structured. It's not like we're going to say, alright, everybody outside and then just let 10 or 20 dogs outside, just outside. They're, they're going to have activities, they're going on pack walks, trail walks, enrichment programs, games, things to do, there's nap times, like it's all going to be structured. It's, we want less dogs for more quality care for the dogs versus, you know, 100 dogs out in the yard just running around amok. I mean, they're like kids, they have to have a structure and balance of what they're doing. They have to be occupied, tired, walked. Again, just, just like kids, you have to have a system in place and a schedule.
I hope that's your chair. Ms. Chair?
Just follow-up. What I'm asking here, is there any modifications you're going to make into the physical structure of the building to keep the sound down, the noise down?
Just inside.
I mean, your implementations are great, but I mean, what's going to really happen?
Yeah, just inside the rubber flooring.
So the windows and all that are going to be normal windows, as it were?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Feel free to take a seat for a couple moments, we're just going to open it up to, to the public. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Please come forward, step up to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Foley, 25 Broad Street. I live directly across from the property, so are familiar with it. I guess my concern is with the city is when you rezone this, it doesn't actually give any solid numbers. These particular owners say 25, but once you implement this, if they're to sell the business, there are no hard numbers. The next person could be 50 dogs. They could have an outdoor kennel. There's no, there's nothing saying that there will not be an outdoor kennel. And I can appreciate during the day, we have the daycare across the street, we're not fools, but at 6:30, 7 o'clock, that is a good neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood. So my concern is the boarding, the weekend boarding, the overnight boarding, with no solid numbers. They could put 50 in there. It says nothing in this ordinance otherwise. That's a huge concern. And if they do increase the numbers, and I'm not saying this particular person, but once you approve this, it's forever, who's to say the next person? Then do we get into the conditions of hazardous waste? 50 dogs urinating, stool, upkeep? It doesn't seem like there's any definitive game plan for a professional business. And to live across the street on the residential side, I do appreciate it's a very difficult street. We have residential on one side, business on the other. It just doesn't seem like this particular type of business fits between, there is a residential neighbor on both sides of them, we're directly across, there is the daycare, there is the church, but most of that area is residential. And the traffic, I, I don't even have a problem with the traffic flowing in and out. I wouldn't even disagree with what their efforts of trying to do. There's the noise ordinance, we don't know what the actual penalty would be at 1:30 in the morning on a Sunday. Do we call the police department? Do they issue a summons? If they do, is there a fine? And if the fine is exceedingly consistent, is there a bigger fine? Is there a fallback for the neighbors? Is there a decibel? Again, we know Broad Street's a very busy street, but after a certain hour, it's not a loud street. And you can't control dogs. I know they want to. I have dogs, you can't control them. When they bark, they bark. And when one dog gets triggered, maybe the rest don't. And maybe these owners won't have these dogs triggered, but that doesn't guarantee us the next owner potentially of the building won't have that problem. And then it's thrust upon us in the neighborhood. So I guess my biggest concern is what does the city actually take when they do this ordinance? So they just, yep, no numbers, no nothing, no, there's nothing to stop them from making a 50-dog kennel. And the lot size isn't big, the property's definitely not big. It was a law firm, it's now a math, math tutoring place. It's not a large volume of people in there. There'd be more dogs in there if this was to happen at this number of 25 than there ever was ever in the 25 years I've lived across the street. So it would increase dramatically just in that aspect with traffic. But I don't have a problem with Broad Street. It's foolish to argue traffic is Broad Street. So my concern is, it just seems so open-ended. When you zone this, is it for dogs too? Or can the next person do a different animal? I don't know what the legalities of all that is with the city when you approve this, this type of ordinance and zoning. So I guess we just want to be safeguarded. We want to see more definitive things in this, I guess. I guess we can't demand it, but we'd ask the city to diligently ask for it. What are the numbers? Can you set numbers? If not, would you want to live next to a potential 50, 100-dog kennel in a very small piece of property? Again, these owners might not be the ones to do it, but things get sold. And once you approve this, I guess we're stuck with it. That's my biggest concern. Well, that's our concern. I, I think that's it. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the application? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. I would give the applicant or, or their representative a chance to respond to the neighbor's testimony. If you could just identify yourself again for the record, please.
Good evening. Elizabeth Hardigan, on behalf of the applicant. In response to that, we understand that, you know, there's a concern. What happens for the next guy? We would be happy as a condition of approval to stipulate that the max number of dogs would be 25 dogs on the property. And again, the hours of operation are seven to seven. Any nighttime access would be for 10-minute periods or however, you know, as they had said, it's going to come in small group numbers for, just to let them out at night. So it shouldn't take very long. So there's not, it's not going to be a playtime after 7:00 PM. And we'd be happy to stipulate that.
Thank you, Ms. Hardigan. Any further follow-up questions from the board?
I just, I have one maybe, and maybe this is for staff as well as, you know, that there's some, is it, is there any venue for sort of like a business plan to be submitted with a conditional use permit that addresses some of the items we've been talking about? You know, like a site plan has a bunch of notes and it says, you know, we're doing this, we're doing that, these are the hours, this is the max, like, like those kind of topics that just got brought up, those would show up on site plan notes. But then a conditional use permit concept, trying to figure out how to, how to get that same information into, you know, in absence of a site plan, you know, where some of that can be addressed. Any thoughts on how to do that?
So, so just a couple thoughts on that.
Yeah.
They did submit the conditional use permit letter, which I think addresses some of it.
Yeah.
There's also in your packet, I believe, I had sent an email to Elizabeth Hardigan asking her some basic questions about the hours of operation, about boarding dogs, how many dogs, all that, all that kind of stuff. So that information is in an email. It is something that we could limit. They've agreed to limit the amount of dogs. I did also ask the question about with daycares, it is reviewed by the state, you can only have so many children per person, you have to have so many square feet of indoor space and outdoor space as well. Fortunately, with dog daycares, it's not like that. There is no oversight on that. The health department did review this plan and they said that if any, you know, problems arise, they will, at that point, step in and take a look at it. Fire department had no comments, I think, but prior to getting a permit, we should also have them just weigh in on this new fence layout just to make sure that they have no issues with it as well. But I think if there were any issues with noise, I mean, obviously, that would be something that they could call the police if they have an issue. I think if there's any issues with the dog waste removal or any issues with smells or odors like that, they can contact our office and we can put them in touch with the health department so they can take a look at that. With a conditional use permit, we don't require applicants to go get a brand-new site plan. The cost for that, especially this is a small business, it would be a lot of money for a small business. But they have addressed, you know, the questions that we've asked them about parking, that there won't be any parking out on, on Broad Street. The daycare will be staggered, so it's not to create traffic or anything like that on the road. They have a, a waste management plan. I know that that, we had a doggy daycare go in, I think it's called Zumiez, at 1. Hardy Street, and they had a waste management plan. That is something we can have them submit to us, so we have that on file. So, I mean, if there was any other issues that we think that they should address, we could make it as conditions of approval.
Okay.
Mr. Barley? Just also a question for, for staff. In terms of the, the scope of the use that would be allowed based on this approval, so obviously, it's framed as specifically dog daycare and boarding, but falls under the more general use of this, animal hospitals, veterinary services, animal pet services. So the scope of the approval, if, if someone were to say, you know, purchase the property and want to put in a, you know, an animal hospital, would that be within the scope of the existing conditional use permit? Or does staff view that they know that would require a new conditional use permit because the use has changed, you know, enough that it wouldn't be within the scope of this approval?
Well, I think when it, if it were to come in, we'd have to review it to just give you an answer, yes or no. It also would depend too, are they making changes to the site? It is in the GI zone. Are they taking down the building? Are they putting in a more intensive use? I think it's something we would review at the time it came in for permit and at that time we would look at it and decide, you know, let them know whether or not they would need to go in front of the planning board or if it's something that, you know, can just be a change of use.
Okay. So there is, in your view, there would be at least some minimal process, there would, there would have to be something that would be submitted to the planning department so you have an opportunity to decide whether required for the planning board.
Right. And they would need to get a building permit because they would need to get a certificate of occupancy and at that time it would be reviewed.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I was looking through the city ordinances relative to noises. There's, there's a code 93-13, noises from animals as a nuisance. Section A, noise from animal which is sustained for periods of more than 30 minutes or which occurs between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, which noise would annoy or disturb any person of normal sensibilities, is found to be a nuisance. Owner of any animal fails by appropriate action effectively abates such nuisance after being requested to do so by any person shall be guilty of violation. And it goes to talk about what the penalties are. The penalties per the ordinance says are fines up to $1,000 per day, each day being a subsequent fine. Given what this uses, I don't know, I don't necessarily have any issues with traffic flow or anything like that as, as one of the butters is speaking to, I have concerns about noise and I think that's really the crux of it, especially on the weekend. I don't have any concerns with, you know, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM weekday activity, but, you know, should they be boarding up to 25 dogs on a weekend, on a, on a holiday, you know, or a vacation week or something? I can see that being a problem with the site. It is only 0.23 acre site and with each, a lot of uses on each side is partially being residential, so, where the businesses, offices, maybe I have less concern about it, but, so I don't know, I'm uncompelled about the weekend portion of this relative to noise, I guess is my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Other questions of, we're still in public session.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess if you have a question for the applicant's team?
No, I do not.
Because we, we can still discuss internally, so.
Okay.
But are there any more questions of the applicant or our staff? Mr. Leclair?
No, I just, I might want to leave the hearing open for a minute in case we want to ask the applicant something, just because, and so I'm, I'm going to put a couple comments out and just if the board wants to kind of think about it. I mean, I, my experience is we, we have a little bit more information provided to us on this type of application, specifically things like, well, some of it we got today, which is helpful, but hasn't been reviewed fully. You know, the layout, the, the sort of number of animals and how they're being managed, that we've seen like the, like cut sheets on the types of turf that are being proposed, the types of chemical cleaners have been submitted to us on several occasions for this. We've seen kind of moderate business plan kind of concepts. So, you know, I'm wondering if the board, you know, you know, should we ask the applicant if they are amenable to putting together some of that information, you know? You know, we can do that now, once we close the hearing, we sort of can't do that, so if anybody's on that page, I just want to inform the chair here that I'm kind of going to be looking for some of that stuff, I think, to be comfortable, so.
Understood. Ms. Harper, please.
I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Leclair. I don't have that comfort level and, you know, I'm concerned about the number of animals and, and having neighbors having to call the police all the time. And, and, you know, that's not good for you either. So I would, I would be on board with getting more information in a business plan.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the consideration. I do always worry about, you know, when, if we're going to ask, if we're going to, for example, Mr. Leclair, you were going to make a motion that we, you know, continue this to allow the applicant to do that, for example. I just think we need to be very specific about what we're asking for so that we don't find ourselves, you know, asking the applicant to do this, come back and then say, well, you know, this didn't actually, you know, address the consideration we had. So I guess, you know, conceptually, I'm okay with that, but I want to be, I would want to be, again, precise about, you know, what we're asking for so that we don't have a, you know, situation where we've got a mismatch in expectations.
Agreed, yeah. I mean, my list would be, I don't know if someone wants to record it, but it would be volume, you know, expected start volume, expected maximum volumes, both for boarding and for daycare, hours, staff size, the, you know, the info that we have now, but be formally submitted for review, the turf type, the cleaner systems, the certifications that you, you know, specific information about the certifications.
And just to clarify, some of this, because, you know, as Linda said, I mean, they have responded both in email and here tonight as to some of those points, like the hours of operation, the number of employees, you know, what they've conveyed in terms of the maximum number of dogs, and agreeing to cap that. Are you saying you just basically, you want them to put that into a comprehensive, single, you know, business plan document? Is that sort of what you see as the missing component, or?
Yes, because I think that would be housed with the conditional use permit. It's hard to take letters and comments and responses and put them with a package and have them exist in sort of like, you know, in perpetuity down the road. Normally, we have like a site plan that does that, and it kind of goes with it, so.
So, instead of us, and I don't mean to put words out, but instead of us, you know, imposing three conditions on the plan, what you're envisioning is they would produce a document, and we'd say, okay, compliance with this document is the condition that we impose.
Correct, yeah. That sort of puts it all together, and that information would be something that can be, you know, put with the package and can be reviewed by the city and even the public, right? I mean, that stuff's not, it's not in a package really right now for us to, and I think it's, you know, going to be hard for people to go through the data, the stuff we have now, and make sense of that, so. That's just my thought. I mean, it's certainly, the board has their own opinions.
Ms. Harper?
I think I'd also want to understand, in regards to the max number of animals, you know, if we were to consider some type of stipulation in that regard, what, you know, what number that would be that would still be comfortable for the applicant to perform business? So, like, you know, just as an example, if we said, you know, 25, you know, was the max number of animals at one time, you know, can they still be in business and be successful with that number, I guess? I just want to know that ahead of time. Or no.
Other questions or comments, because I'm sure Ms. Harding, you know, would like an opportunity to respond here.
Sure.
Yeah.
Larry?
My big concern is the noise, because once they're in place there, if it doesn't work out, there are problems or issues, the neighbors are stuck with it, basically. I don't know how to quantify or, you know, set up any kind of matrix to control that. I'm just pointing out that that's my big concern on a small lot like that in an urban area. It could be a real nuisance for many years. And I don't know if anyone could suggest a way to handle that or control that. I don't think it's possible, but.
Any further comments or discussion from the board at this time? I am going to give Ms. Harding an opportunity to respond, so I think you've heard a number of different concerns, questions, but please, floor is yours.
Thank you. I would agree with you. Those are all valid questions, which Linda had presented to us, and we responded back. I actually prepared a conditions of approval list that have that information that you can attach to the approval, so it'll be a conditional use permit, subject to these stipulations. And the stipulations, as we had discussed, and, you know, sort of been a roundabout way, but the max number of dogs would be 25, and now that we've heard the board's sort of concern about, you know, how many dogs are boarding, we're not really sure how these numbers of dogs are going to work, talked to my clients, and they agreed that they would cap it to 10 dogs boarded. So, max 25 dogs and some variation for daycare, and then the max number of dogs that would be sleeping on site would be 10. And then, you know, if, and as to your point, Ms. Harper, if we, if the business is booming and, you know, they realize that they have so much more space, et cetera, they would have to come back to the board and explain that, and at that point, we would have already proved ourselves as a viable business in the area. There wouldn't be a noise problem. We've already addressed, you know, the neighbors don't hate us, probably wouldn't come back asking for more if the neighbors hated us at that point, and said, you know, we thought 25 was max, but really, we can accommodate more, this is why, this is how many employees. Right now, the employees are just my two clients. Similar to, and quite honestly, they're happy to provide the turf and the cleaning information, but at this point, because this is a new small business, they're trying not to put the cart before the horse. They don't want to spend too much time and resources deciding, making all these big business decisions if they can't make the business viable in this spot. So, I think that that comes down to it. They'd be happy to provide that, put it in the file, saying these are what we would be doing, may not be a part of the conditions of approval, just because, you know, in five years, some new technology could come out, and they want to do that, and don't want to be tied to it, have to come to the board and say, oh, we have this new cleaner, can we use it? Which I think you guys can all appreciate. Would also like to point out that there are two other doggy daycares within .2 miles of this site, on small residential slots. They haven't been a problem. You know, they haven't become a public nuisance, there isn't an issue. They believe that they can also, you know, have their viable business on Broad Street without having barking issues. Again, if only having 10 dogs in small amounts going out at night, again, those 10 dogs will only be there on the weekends. If there's only two dogs, they may actually just take them home, they might even be on site, whatever it may be. So, we're happy to provide those conditions, staple them right to, right to it, saying number of hours, these are our hours of operation, answering all of those questions. I just hate for this, you know, small business to not be able to start, just because we got lost in the weeds a little bit.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Harding?
I guess, just to clarify, if we were to stipulate a certain number of animals, then you would be amenable to 25. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Any other questions perceived at this time for the applicant? Because if not, we can close the.
Did you, yes, 25 is the cap, sorry. I printed out in my office the exact bullet points of hours of operation, number of dogs, employees, so that we could all see it. I don't have it. So, that's what I was looking for, I apologize. But we could provide it to staff, they could put it on it, with those numbers, if that's was amenable to the approval tonight. Is there anything else I missed?
For me?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to close the public hearing, open it up to discussion amongst the board. It seems like we've got a couple of options here potentially. One is to continue, honestly, till we see a more formalized statement of some of the supplemental information or cleaner version of that. The other is to make a motion, potentially to approve, but with basically inserting sort of our own conditions upon that. Didn't know if anyone wanted to start off the discussion. Mr. Riley?
Sure, yeah. I think, you know, my inclination would be to try to work to build in conditions to the conditional use permit we have for us, to see if we can get consensus on approval of that. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, there's a couple of key issues that we can address pretty readily and easily by that, you know, mechanism. You know, one is being the maximum number of dogs, two being, you know, the hours of operation. You know, it seems we could even stipulate that, you know, the applicant would, within a certain period of time, you know, develop sort of a simple business plan that they could then submit to staff, that staff would have on record. I think, first to your point about the noise, it seems to me that's, you know, that's sort of a function of the operation, and I think, you know, that's going to be true of every doggy daycare, and as I pointed out, you know, we did, we approved a similar operation, I think it's like .2 miles away, you know, that has the same basic functionality, similar size, you know, similar type of operation. So, you know, it seems to me that's just sort of, you know, an element of the, you know, the use that we can't do anything about, so. It seems to me either you accept that that's a risk, or you don't, but I mean, I don't think there's any, there's a whole lot of control we can exercise over the level of noise, other than compliance with the noise ordinance, in fact. So, that's where I would sit, I would be inclined to do that, but I understand I might be in the minority here.
I appreciate everybody's feedback on the matter. I would probably be more inclined with Mr. Barley's line of thinking. That's not discounting the concern of other board members that were discussed tonight, but there are similar facilities and, you know, pretty proximate location to this one as well. That said, you know, obviously, this would be the time to discuss it. So, I guess at some point, where we, as a board, we need to start thinking is we're going to have to make some sort of motion this evening regardless, so if there were strong opinions one way or the other, with respect to asking for a continuance, I guess, reading over the supplemental materials that were submitted as part of the packet, along with the additional possible stipulations that we could add as conditions of approval, it seems like that would cover most of the bases. In terms of the sound, I guess ultimately, with this application or any other, it's not really the jurisdiction of this board to police sounding in the city. You know, there's other existing ordinances which would govern that. So, again, I guess that's a sort of a roundabout way of stating, I'd be inclined to agree with Mr. Barley in how I would proceed, but obviously, if, I'm interested in hearing from other board members, if there's other thoughts on the matter.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, just, there's already vehicles to address the noise situation if it is recurring, if it is over a continuous period of time, so it's not really our place to define that more narrowly. I guess we could add a condition, but I think there's ways for their butters to deal with it and work with the business to, you know, come to a conclusion, if something were to, you know, continually be happening.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you. Sorry, I had to step out, tickle my throat. I was on Zumiez website, which I think is the business referenced, like two miles away. That also appears to be in a residential area. I don't know what the best practices are, but they talk about sleepovers at Zumiez, and they reference, they only house a few dogs at a time, the dogs don't disturb each other. They also have a size limit for dogs, so 20 pounds, and again, I had no idea what bearing that has on noise or anything else, but they put some measures in place, maybe that's just their business model, I don't know, but, again, my concern is the housing part of this application, which is on the weekends. Zumiez only references 8:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. daily is their hours. They don't make any reference to weekends, but I don't know, maybe somebody more familiar with their business knows, but I don't. Apparently, that use has been able to coexist in the residential area. I just offer that as additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Leclerc?
I think if I were going down the road of trying to put some stipulations on this to get it kind of framed, I would want the proposed circulation, the fence layout, the parking, to be reviewed by engineering, and like, the applicant to kind of work with engineering to get that approval, you know, to at least go through and get that review done, to make sure that we're not having issues there, so. Because that part of it does kind of sneak up on these plans a lot of times, and, you know, cause some, you know, just because there's expertise there that could help maybe keep that from getting complicated, you know? So, I'd want that process to happen, you know, which is, again, what a site plan would do, but like using that review to kind of get that same function, maybe, so.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. And I would sort of co-sign on that. I think that's something Mr. Hudson had alluded to earlier, so I think that's something that could certainly be called for. Thoughts or questions from, Ms. Harper, please?
I would like to have the information, the bullet points, or what you have, the business plan, if that could be shared as part of the approval, well, not the approval, but provided, because I do think that's a different, that is part of the difference between one of the other approvals we've made on this type of business, is that I think we were presented a more definitive business plan, and with a smaller volume. And then, of course, the other thing is I do think we should have a stipulation as to how, the maximum number of animals.
So, I guess maybe quick summary of where we are right now. If someone were to consider a motion to approve, in addition to staff stipulations, three additional stipulations would be limiting the number of dogs, formally submitting sort of a more defined business plan, for lack of a better term, as well as undergoing other engineering slash other departmental review with respect to site circulation, fence placement. Those are kind of the three big ones I have right now.
And hours of operation.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that would be included in the business plan, but we could call that out separately, just as added emphasis. And I think with respect to the number of dogs, 25 seemed to be the number that was, the applicant was amenable to. Is, Mr. Hudson?
Is there a reason we couldn't move the table this until the next meeting, when they could come back with additional information? Seems like we're making a lot of matrations to try to get this approved in one.
No, and I think that's what we're struggling with a little bit. I think those were our two options.
Our next meeting's in 14 days, right? I mean, that's, I'm, without some of these answers, I don't think I can support approval, even if it's conditional.
Yeah, and I apologize, because I think you might have been.
I was out when I was discussing.
But yeah, so I, again, I was the one who sort of said, I'd be more initially, be more inclined to, you know, approve the conditions, but, you know, so I don't know where we're at at this point. I will initially defer if there's, you know, if we think we've got a majority that favors table, and I'll let somebody make that motion. If not, you know, I would make a motion with, you know, to approve the conditions, so.
I guess, I'm torn, but I appreciate, I value Mr. Hudson's professional opinion on the matter, and as the only city staff member that we're fortunate enough to have on this board, if Mr. Hudson feels that delaying this potentially for another two, because I think that, you're right, if we don't have to rush it through, we don't have to rush it through, but if this can be heard, can this reasonably heard? Can this reasonably be heard in two weeks, or?
Yes, it can be placed first on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Ms. Leclerc?
Yeah, I'm on the same page as Mr. Hudson. I just think it makes it a stronger application, and it actually helps the applicant in the long run, because they're not going to get, they're going to have a sort of, yes, this is what I said, it's defensible, it's clear, it's, you know, there's just no, you know, they got a chance to think it through and put it all down, you know, and I would recommend that, so.
Yeah, well, I will just say that the things that I'm most curious about, concerned about, whatever, are some of the things that were mentioned, they're not necessarily engineering items, in terms of, I mean, I would like to see a better sketch or whatever, so we understood it, again, that being part of the record, but it's the, it is the things like hours of operation, number of. of operation, number of dogs, things like that, which I don't want to put the applicant in a box, so to speak. I want them to go back, consider what input has been, and come back with, here it is, here's the bullet points, and this is what we propose, and everyone would have conditioned as part of the approval.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the matter? I am going to ask for a motion. So has anyone made, Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this to our next meeting, which is, what's the date?
May 16th.
May 16th, with the intent for the applicant to be given the opportunity to provide additional information, which includes clarification of the circulation and parking and fencing, the turf material that they're intending, and not like boxing them in, but what they're intending at this time, the cleaning processes that they're intending, the hours of operation, the maximum number of dogs to be during daycare and also during boarding, the number of employees, and the employees' certification and training intentions. Anybody want to add to that list before I close my motion?
The certification process, I think that was, did you just say?
Yeah, I did say that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that would be my motion.
All right.
Yeah, perhaps a process for addressing noise complaints?
Maybe just to include their strategy for addressing noise complaints.
Okay. So there is a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion?
No, just that for the applicant's sake, that information and everything we've been talking about, when is the minutes available for this?
They should be ready in a few days. Is it 48, 72 hours?
Okay. Yeah, just so you know, if you miss something, there is a, there'll be a readout of all this for you that you can read from, so.
All right. With no further discussion on the matter, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of continuing to May 16th? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Case is tabled for two weeks. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Right, thanks.
Next items on the agenda, new business subdivision plan and new business site plan, same property located at 115 Northeastern Boulevard. Those cases are continued to June Before we begin our other business this evening, I would like to call for a five-minute recess if we could, just to regroup. So we are temporarily in recess at 8:53. Okay. All right, we are back from recess at nine o'clock. Continuing on with the agenda, our other business items. We're going to take these slightly out of order, but we are still going to start with item number one, review of tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Has any member of the board had a chance to review those items? I would like to make a motion with respect to regional impact. Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, sure. So I've reviewed the tentative agenda and determined that there are no proposals of regional impact at this time.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, review of draft fiscal year 2025 capital improvement program. Sam, do you have anything to add to that or?
I'll just be very brief. You know, the committee met multiple times over the past few months, typical process, interviewed different departments, heard projects. You know, we're clear in our ranking criteria, ranked them independently, not as a group, which I thought was better. And yeah, the report before you is based on their efforts.
Thank you, Sam. The only other thing I would add on the matter is, it was my first go-around in that process. I can only echo what Sam stated, but it was interesting to see just in terms of representation, there was Aldermanic representation, three citizen members as well as city staff and planning board representation as well. So I think it was a fair representation and a fair assessment of the projects under consideration. So I think with that said, we would be willing, we'd basically, Sam, be voting to make a favorable recommendation regarding?
Yes.
This, okay, okay. So did any board member have any further questions on the CIP process or? Okay, okay. With that, I would be looking for someone to make a favorable or unfavorable referral to the Board of Aldermen regarding the FY 2025 capital improvement program. Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for the capital improvements plan for the fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes. Next, we're going to take item number two, which is a referral from the Board of Aldermen on resolution R24-036 relative to easements for the Riverfront project.
Well, I'm just going to recuse myself from this one because I have, my firm has some interest in this one.
Certainly, Scott, thank you. Sam, anything to tell us about tonight?
I will turn it over to Amy Duroch.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Amy Duroch, I'm the Economic Development Project Manager for the Riverfront project. So what you have tonight in R2436 are the list of easements that we will be seeking for the project. You'll see a list of 10 separate easements there. They range from actual permit easements, where we're attaching boardwalks to buildings, to easements on property literally in the middle of the river that don't really get affected by anything. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I also have John Vancore with me this evening if you have like super technical questions. As note, this has also been approved by infrastructure. We know we went slightly out of order due to the cancellation of this meeting.
I've had a chance to review the materials previously. I personally don't have any questions. Obviously, this has been in the work for quite some time through the city, but I, obviously, other board members have questions or comments about this. But I thought it was thought through pretty thoroughly myself. So if there are no questions, we'd be looking for a motion. Again, this is an Aldermanic referral, so it would either be a favorable or unfavorable referral with respect to resolution R34-036. Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen in regards to resolution R24036 relative to the easements for the Riverfront project.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Harper for a positive referral to the BOA. Is there a second on that? Second, Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, we're going to discuss item resolution R24-050 with respect to authorizing the sale of a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this matter and from the next referral agenda, so I will exit from the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barley. If anyone is here to present tonight on resolution R24-050, we'll kind of take that one first. Or did you want to join them together?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just get a bar?
Certainly. I know you've been waiting patiently, so.
I'm going to try to get that.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak with Hayner Swanson, civil engineer, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Joining me here tonight is the Mohawk redevelopment team, Lloyd Geisinger, Bernie Plant from Blaylock Holdings, Michael Devon from Thorndike Development, and of course, Attorney Brad Westgate. Here tonight seeking favorable recommendations for two Board of Aldermen referrals related to the overall Mohawk Tannery redevelopment project, which as I'm sure you know involves the full remediation of the former Fimboldor and Mohawk Tannery sites and subsequent redevelopment into 546-unit multifamily residential development, along with a whole host of associated site improvements. So the two referrals before you specifically tonight, one is authorizing the sale of a portion of the Parkway right-of-way. The second referral is related to the project's master development agreement, the MDA, which has been hard at work for many months. As you can imagine, this is a large, complex project, relies upon successful partnership between the EPA, DES, City of Nashua Development Team, and many other industry partners. As a quick recap, last year, the board, the project received Board of Aldermen approvals related to site rezoning of the parcel, an overlay district over the project area, as well as approval of the project's master concept plan. We also filed our former subdivision and site plans associated with the redevelopment portion of the project. There's four of those cases. You've seen those on your agendas over the past few months. And we did appear before this board related to those subdivision and site plan applications last June. We thought we'd be back in short manner, but here we are about a year later. And, but we've got quite a bit of an update to the project and hopefully some really good momentum moving forward. If you recall, the overlay district that was enacted requires that the MDA specifically be approved by the Board of Aldermen prior to the project moving forward. be approved by the Board of Aldermen prior to the project moving forward with those planning board or zoning board approvals, which is why we've been a little bit in limbo on that end as the MDA and other items have been finalized. After months of work and collaboration between the Blaylock team and city staff, that MDA was submitted to the Board of Aldermen last month and is now before you and other boards as referral items. If all goes to plan, certainly we would be back here before you on June 20th as it relates to the site plan and subdivision applications. I think tonight is going to be a good refresher for the board. I think most, we've sat through the initial presentation, except for maybe Mr. Green, but it'll be a good refresher, and then we'll also speak to specific information and can answer questions related to those two Board of Aldermen referral items. So at this time, I'd like to turn things over to Lloyd.
Thank you, Tom. For the record, Lloyd Geisinger, managing partner along with Bernie Plant of Blaylock Holdings. Bernie asked my company, Thorndike Development, to get involved a couple of years ago, and we've been working hand in glove with Bernie ever since to get us to this point. We have put together for you a updated presentation of, I think will provide you with the key elements of the plan as it currently stands, as well as combined into this presentation information regarding the right-of-way parcel and the summary of key points in the master development agreement. So I'll, with that, walk you through. I think everyone at this point knows where the site is located, adjacent to the Nashua River, just off of Veterans Memorial Parkway, below Little Florida and the Intervale-Fairmount Street neighborhood. We have the two parcels of land that were put under contract in 2019, the Mohawk parcel and the Fimble Door parcel, which were put under by Blaylock Holdings in 2019, which allowed this entire process to move forward with the EPA as well as with the city. And in 2020, Bernie, before Thorndike was involved, successfully negotiated a landmark agreement with the EPA in which the EPA agreed to commit $6 million of grant funds to the remediation of the Mohawk property. That number has since been increased to 9.1 and possibly even 9.5 million dollars. And we'll get to that a little bit later in the presentation, but this was the threshold issue that really sprung free our ability to move forward with the development. In 2023, Blaylock was selected through a city RFP process to, and designated to be the purchaser of what we are calling the right-of-way parcel. Oh my, wonderful, I'm not on TV, so my pointer works. Old school. So that parcel, as you can see, is the last piece of the puzzle that allows us to put together this 40-acre piece of land that is the subject of the development as well as the cleanup operation. With that, I'd like to just walk you through a little bit about the cleanup, the redevelopment plan, and as part of that, talk about the right-of-way parcel in a little more detail, and then turn to key elements of the master development agreement, and then we'll wrap up with a very quick discussion about where this project goes from here. So just to ground everyone, and I know everyone has seen this photo before, but this is circa 1970 what the City of Nashua was dealing with, the Mohawk Tannery factory shown there, the Fimble Door factory, and these lagoons that sit within, adjacent to the Nashua River that contain all sorts of carcinogenic sludge. They are, to remain where they are as part of the cleanup, and all of the other deposits that are on the site will be consolidated into that same location. However, a concrete containment wall designed and engineered by Haley and Aldridge and approved by the EPA and New Hampshire DES will be built surrounding those lagoons and in the process raising the elevation from the 100-year event to the 500-year event. In addition, of course, that will then be capped, providing further protection. It's quite an operation, but the good news is that everything remains on site. None of the earth is being removed from the site, and that allows for a very efficient operation. All of this, when combined, represents almost, just over $23 million to get us from where we started to the cleanup completed. This does not include any of the costs associated with the development that will follow. This is specifically related to the cleanup. And as you can imagine, putting this kind of, these kinds of funds together for a super fund site can be quite challenging. It has required the cooperation of virtually every agency and group, as you can see here. The EPA at the top that started all this has increased the amount that they've committed from 6 million to 9.1 million. We appealed to the governor to try and spring free some additional ARPA funds, which is called gopher funds at this point, and we now have a firm commitment for an additional $3.4 million grant. The New Hampshire BFA, working with the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, is loaning $3.5 million, $2.5 million of which will be repaid through a revenue bond from the housing authority at the completion of the remediation. And the City of Nashua, through its housing trust, is agreed to loan $2 million, which will be fully repaid as the development project gets underway after the cleanup. Blaylock is putting in $4.7 million of cash as equity, and the, we are also pursuing at this point a demolition grant for $490,000. We do not have final approval on that one piece. All of the other pieces are essentially in final approval stage. There is another important element to the funding discussion, and that is the ongoing maintenance in perpetuity of this containment area once it's completed. We have negotiated an arrangement with a private company by the name of Greenfield Environmental Trust. Greenfield is in the business of acquiring superfund containment sites, believe it or not, and work with the EPA across the country, managing dozens of these facilities. They happen to be based in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And they have agreed, once the cleanup is complete, to take ownership of the containment cell as a separate lot. The subdivision plan that Tom referred to a little earlier breaks this property out as its own lot. They will acquire the property and set up a trust which will be responsible for its ongoing maintenance in perpetuity. Funding for that maintenance operation will come from the property owners here. The, and so if I move ahead to the site plan, as you may recall, the four buildings shown at the front represent the rental part of the development, 230 apartments, and the five buildings shown towards the rear, to the south, represent the condominium, the for-sale portion of the development. Both of these property owners will be obligated through the master association to provide the annual funding in perpetuity to the Greenfield Environmental Trust in order to ensure that maintenance of this containment cell will be properly funded. Once the cleanup is complete, as you can see from this plan, the area will be used for recreational purposes. And just looking at this three dimensionally, which I think gives you a little better understanding of how this all fits together, we have the apartments in the front to the north, condominiums to the south, recreation areas immediately adjacent to the river. There's also 13 acres of property that will be deeded to the city, and as part of this, there's also a pedestrian bridge that we'll talk about a little bit later that is part of the development program. Just a couple of slides showing what these recreation areas will look like. I should point out that at this point, we have construction document level plans for most of this work, certainly through design development, so what you're looking at is extremely accurate as to what we expect to build. This is not a conceptual notion. These are the specific plans that we intend to build. As you can see here, there's a kayak and canoe launch, which is one of the public amenities that we'll talk about when we get to the master development agreement. And behind that, or adjacent to it, is the Riverwalk, which will be an important public amenity, ball fields, or just open fields, I should say. On top of that, this, by the way, is the containment wall and the actual elevation. You can see the relationship of the height of the wall to the water down below. This represents an elevation in excess of the 500-year event. And the, as well as the pedestrian bridge across the Mine Falls Park, which I mentioned a moment ago, just another view of that same park, looking back from the Mine Falls Park towards the new development. Very important consideration, and a driver behind building this pedestrian bridge is creating access from the Little Florida and Fairmount Heights neighborhoods, as well as from across Veterans Memorial Parkway, and bringing to fruition a part of the city's recreation plan that has been in place but not completed since the 1970s. So this is not a gated community. This is an open neighborhood built on the principles of smart growth, which will provide easy access for pedestrians throughout, connecting over to Mine Falls Park, as well as vehicular access down to the canoe and kayak launch. And as I just mentioned, Thorndike has been a leader in smart growth development for decades. We believe very strongly that the developments need to create streetscapes that are pedestrian-friendly, that encourage people to get out and walk. These buildings, as you can see, are intended to enliven the streetscape, as well as create intimate private spaces in a somewhat urban setting. And this is just a couple of images of how we expect this to unfold. An important part of the discussion from the very outset was addressing inclusionary housing, and there are really two elements to that. First, 38 of the 230 apartments are committed to be affordable, and with respect to the 316 condominiums, we are committed to making an in-loop payment of $2,368,000. That number might actually increase based on how things unfold, and I'll get to that in a moment when we're talking about the MDA. So with that as a quick overview of the project, I'd like to turn now to a discussion of the key elements of the master development agreement, which we've outlined here. First and very important, the master development agreement obligates Blaylock to complete the remediation before any building permits are issued, before we can move forward with any of the development that, of course, is the capital driver that's allowing us to do this work. Now, with respect to the right-of-way parcel, which is shown here on the plan, you can, this is the extent of the 4.42 acre, excuse me, 4.44 acres of land that was the subject of the RFP, which Blaylock won, and that property will be purchased by Blaylock prior to any remediation commencing. The purchase price is $990,000, which was determined based on the New Hampshire Department of Transportation appraisal process. They, we were all required to agree when we responded to the RFP that we would pay the price that was ultimately designated through this appraisal process, and that price turned out to be $990,000. Unfortunately, those purchase price funds passed through the city in a moment to the Federal Highway Administration because it was the Federal Highway Administration that funded the Parkway to begin with. Blaylock is responsible for the removal of existing asbestos, which is on the property, was placed there under a permit when the Parkway was built, but given the containment cell that we will be building down in this area, our intent is to remove that asbestos, or virtually all of the asbestos, and relocate it into the landfill, which will be a safer and more permanent home for it. All work is Blaylock's responsibility, inclusive of reworking the existing highway drainage. Of course, there is existing drainage for the highway in this area, and as part of the plans that Tom's firm has prepared, that drainage gets reworked, and of course, the city will receive drainage easements over the property for any future maintenance of the public drainage that might be required. Next, within the master development agreement, it specifies the housing program in detail, and through a long negotiation process, we settled on the 230 apartments, as I mentioned earlier, the 316 condominiums. This is, these are precise numbers that are specified in the MDA and that we've committed to as a overall density. The plan itself, as Tom mentioned earlier, has been approved, the master concept plan has been approved by the Board of Aldermen, as you're well aware. The site plan has been pending before the planning board for quite some time. We are on a trajectory to have the Board of Aldermen act on the master development agreement at the end of the month of May. We are on your agenda for, I believe, 20th of June, and so our hope and expectation is that between now and then, we'll be working with Sam and staff to finalize all of the elements of the plan and conditions so that we can come back before your board on June 20th, we hope with a signed master development agreement, which will then allow the planning board to act on the plans that are before them for the subdivision and the general The, one of the very important elements of the MDA that has been on the books and is part of the requirements is that access to the adjacent Tamposy land, Tamposy's own about 18 acres of land to the east, which has been part of the housing plans for the city for quite some time. When the Veterans Memorial Parkway was built, there was only one stoplight envisioned at this location for access to this property. So it was very important, and we have committed, as a first phase before any occupancy permits are issued, to build the road that's shown in this blue dotted line and provide access to utilities up to the Tamposy property line. And that is spelled out in the MDA. We've talked a little bit about the public amenities. They are spelled out in detail in the master development agreement, the specific amenities that Blaylock is obligated to develop, as well as a time schedule as to when those amenities need to be built. Each of the elements has kind of a two-part test, an outside date by which it needs to be built, but also a level of completion of the project vis-à-vis occupancy permits. So 25% of the occupancy permits, certain things need to be done, 50%, 75%, but no later than X date. And the list of amenities includes, as we mentioned earlier, the public kayak and canoe launch and associated parking. This is open to all residents of Nashua. The Riverwalk also open to everyone. The pedestrian access connections, there are two separate connections to Intervale and Fairmount Street. The conveyance of the 13 acres of open space to the very south of the property, and the construction of the pedestrian bridge across the Nashua River. So we talked briefly about the inclusionary housing in the introduction. It is spelled out in the master development agreement, and specifically the 38 affordable units that go with the 230 apartments, the $2,368,000 base in-loop payment required. But there is also in the But there is also in the MDA a mechanism that specifies that if Blaylock chooses to sell the condominium site to a third-party developer as opposed to an affiliated developer, and we sell it for more than a specific purchase price that was a negotiated number, that the city would share in that, let's call it, windfall profit. So there's the potential for that $2,368,000 number to increase. However, I have to tell you that is our expectation and intent to build the condominiums ourselves. But there's always that possibility. There was a good deal of discussion about constructions, period, special conditions. The access for the remediation and all future development will come via Veterans Memorial Parkway, but we're going to need access from Intervale for a very brief period of time in order to be able to construct that access. And so the master development agreement allows us to use Intervale for no more than one month at the very beginning of the development in order to get construction vehicles onto the property, build the access from Veterans Memorial Parkway, at which point no further construction vehicle access through the neighborhoods will be permitted. There's also a very detailed plan that lays out hours of operation near the residential neighborhoods. The property is basically broken out into two zones. There's a zone nearer to the neighborhoods and the zones farther away, and the hours of operation are specified and are different for any outdoor work going on in those two different zones. Maintenance of all of the, everything on the property is to be private with the single exception of long-term maintenance repairs of the pedestrian bridge. This is a public bridge. We were not comfortable taking on the liability associated with maintaining a public bridge. We have, however, agreed to snow removal on the bridge on an annual basis. So we're talking about long-term painting and maintenance and that type of thing that might be required for the bridge. The MDA also describes, has quite a bit of information regarding funding. What we have pulled into these slides is the specific funding that is coming from the city to benefit the remediation of the property. So specifically, we are before the Board of Alderman requesting a $2 million city loan. These funds will be applied against the remediation costs. The loan will be repaid by Blaylock during the development of the condominium buildings. There's also, as I mentioned earlier, a $2.5 million revenue bond. This is not a general obligation bond. If Tim Cummings were here, he would be emphasizing that this is not a general obligation bond. It is a different, it's a first cousin to a general obligation bond, but the holder of the bond can only look to the incremental taxes that come from the new development of this property. And the BFA, which is, of course, a quasi-public organization that has been created to help facilitate unusual developments like this, has agreed to accept payment of $2.5 million, of a $3.5 million total commitment in the form of this revenue bond. The other million dollars that the BFA is putting forward as a loan is to be repaid by Blaylock at the completion of the remediation. There are a number of other federal, state, and private funding sources that I showed in that Capitol stack earlier that also are in the MDA. And the last piece of the financing piece of the MDA relates to the funding for the pedestrian bridge, which is in fact anticipated to be funded through general obligation bonds. However, Blaylock has agreed to take on all of the front-end costs of permitting, engineering, design, and construction, and looking to the city to be reimbursed as the work is actually done, and it is capped at $3 million. It's our chase if the bridge winds up costing more. Project phasing is also covered in the MDA. As I mentioned before, there's a connection that is made between public improvements and construction of buildings and roads. The property has been broken down into five phases. Switching now to the base plan that are the HSI site plans, you can see the green is the connection to the Tamposy property, which is a part of Phase 1, as well as the emergency access up to Fairmont Street, along with, from a building construction standpoint, the first apartment building. Phase 2 then continues the building construction, but also obligates us to build the roadway or driveway down and the parking associated with the kayak launch, which is also part of this phase, as well as the initial seeding and landscaping above the landfill and conveyance of the open space, the 13-acre open space lot to the city. And then, again, continued residential building development, along with the River Walk and the connection up to Intervale and the construction of the pedestrian bridge. These are all part of Phase 3 in the MDA. These phases have specific dates, as well as completion of these various components. Phase 4 at this point is we're now into strictly new building construction, as well as an outside date for the clubhouse for the condominiums. And Phase 5 then is the last piece of the condominium project. Couple of miscellaneous items that are in the MDA. There's a request for an abatement of back taxes. The owners of the Mohawk property in Fimble Door have not paid their taxes for many years. There's a requirement for performance bonds, which will be discussed as part of our planning board approval for things like top coat and the like as the project progresses. And then, as I mentioned several times, a schedule of public improvements, permitting repayment of the city financing, certain aspects of building construction are all laid out in the exhibit to the MDA. So that concludes our overview of the master development agreement. We also earlier showed you the slides relative to the right-of-way parcel and the funding for that, the purchase and sale agreement for which is fairly straightforward as a document. It really simply states that we're going to pay the city $990,000 and in exchange receive title to that right-of-way parcel. And then, of course, subsequently, the obligations that are spelled out in the MDA in terms of dealing with the asbestos, making sure the roadway maintenance, excuse me, the Parkway drainage is properly dealt with. These are specified in that purchase and sale agreement. And as a last slide here as to timeline, we are right here in 2024. And while all of this is going on with the city, we have an entirely parallel process going on with the EPA and New Hampshire DES to finalize the cleanup plan for the remediation, which has been quite an effort. But we are on track right now to submit that final plan in July and have every expectation that we will have final approval from the EPA in the very early fall. We have targeted a closing date of October 15th, and at this point, I'm feeling very good about that date. There's a tremendous amount to do, but we are on track on every single aspect of this project to be able to close October 15th. From there, the remediation work is surprisingly quick. This is really a large earth-moving operation, but because it's all onsite and we can then throw very big, heavy equipment at it, it should move along quite well. The company that we are working with that will be doing the work is an outfit by the name of Charter. Charter has done, I believe, 17 other EPA Superfund cleanups in the Northeast region. They are kind of the Rolls-Royce company and the go-to company for the EPA. They've been terrific to work with. They are telling us that the cleanup should take between nine months and 12 months. That includes the construction of the containment wall, relocating all of the contaminated materials into that cell, as well as capping it. There is then a six-month sign-off process. It's basically a punch list process that the EPA goes through, doing a great deal of testing, generating reports before we get our final sign-off, which we need before we can begin the actual development process. And at that point, we would be at the starting line for the development. And we expect that that work will take place over the coming six, seven, eight years. So this is a long marathon process, but we've made a tremendous amount of progress and we're very excited as to where we are at this point. So with that, that concludes our remarks. Obviously happy to answer any questions. We have counsel here as well, as well as my partner Bernie Plant, and we'll turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and sort of the reintroduction to the project. It's obviously been a number of months since we saw you last. Just for the board's reference, if you didn't get a chance to read about all 60-plus pages of the resolution that were in your packet, I think virtually every major topic contained therein was touched upon this evening. So we do appreciate your thorough presentation. I think with that, obviously, this is a large undertaking for the city. We are going to get a bite at the apple formally when this comes back before us with respect to their site plan application. But in terms of the resolution, or the two resolutions, are there any questions from board members this evening, anything that was presented this evening, or overall process, or anything of that sort? Mr. Hudson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And for the record, I've been involved in some of the discussions developing this to date, so I'm somewhat familiar with this. I just want, I think I heard correctly, I just want to hear it again. What's shown on the phasing diagrams as public improvements, those are basically like public accesses and things like that, rights of passage. They're not actually public facilities in the end, so to speak, in terms of ownership maintenance by the city.
That is correct.
With the exception of the bridge, as you know.
Yes, so you're exactly right, Dan. So these are all privately maintained facilities, but open to the public.
Further, Mr. Chair?
Certainly, please.
The intersection improvement, or construction basically of that signalized intersection on the Parkway doesn't appear to be in the green. That would be something conditioned from the boards?
That's part, our expectation is that that will be part of the site plan approval process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question on what we can anticipate on the site plan process. Is it coming in as one large site plan, or are we going to see it in pieces?
Tom, you have a question?
A quick answer is yes. So we've already submitted the site plan. It's a big, large set of drawings. To set the table, there are three subdivision applications. One related to the Parkway parcel, one related to that Tamposy two-thirds acre, and then the third subdivision is a consolidation and then resubdivision of all the parcels to set the table. Fourth application would be the site plan. So we would be coming in with one site plan for the whole redevelopment. And my guess would be that over those, you know, eight to 10 years, we may be back before the board a couple of times with amendments, but our goal is to encapsulate everything we know at this point, all those elements of the project. And those will include detailed phasing plans that will build off of the MDA and maybe get into a little bit more specifics about, hey, we're going to build this piece of sewer line from here to here, so that we get into the nitty-gritty a little bit more.
And then, one more question about the subdivisions. You talked about the containment area eventually being its own parcel?
Correct.
Like, does that happen during this first process, or is that after?
It's in the subdivision plan that was submitted, yes. So it'd be a consolidation of all those parcels and a resubdivision. There's a total of nine lots. One of the lots will include the containment area, one will be the southerly, you know, conservation piece, so, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Other members of the board?
Yeah, a quick question for staff. Anything in the master development agreement that was concerned or brought up during the Alderman meeting?
I was not at the Alderman meeting. I would let Mr. Guazin speak to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
If there's any concerns brought up in the Alderman meeting previously?
Well, we-
With the master development agreement.
So, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. We presented, we made the same presentation to the finance committee last night, and they voted unanimously to support the resolution, and there were no issues at all raised at that particular meeting.
Other questions? Thank you again for your time this evening. Because if there's no further questions from the board, at this point, to allow the process to continue, we would be looking for favorable, again, favorable or unfavorable referral to the Board of Alderman. Two separate items, we'd have to cite resolution, I would probably take them individually. First resolution, R24-050, that's authorizing the sale of the land for the 9.9 mil. So I guess we'll take that one first. Is any member of the board willing to make a recommendation on Resolution R24-050? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a favorable referral to the Board of Alderman on Resolution R24-050, authorizing the sale of a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right of way.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Referral passes. Secondly, we'd be looking for a referral regarding Resolution R24-053, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Blaylock Holdings, LLC. Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll continue with an additional motion for a favorable referral to the Board of Alderman on Resolution R24-053, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Blaylock Holdings, LLC.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Mr. Green, thank you. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Nothing else on the agenda this evening, unless anyone else has anything missed out on earlier. If there's not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Leclair, are all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We are adjourned at 9:49.